We're live, all right, very good, thank you. Good evening, everybody here in person at Rainham Town Hall and everybody watching at home. This is the pre-town meeting in anticipation of next week's annual town meeting and special town meeting. My name is John Donahue, I'm the town moderator, joined by up front here from the Finance Committee, Gil Alegi, Chair, and Jim Ross. And to be joined, I would assume, next Monday night by Ted Sargent and Mike King as well. Also in attendance here are three select members, select men, Marie Smith, Joe Pacheco, Karen Roberts, Town Council Ted Pietnik, and a whole host of department heads and commission members. So I think we'll just gotta move right into this. To be honest with you, when I read both warrants, I don't remember having, A, such a short annual town meeting warrant with 29 articles, I believe, but B, you know what, and I'm gonna jinx us, what would appear to be a relatively controversy-free warrant, if you will? Yeah, knock on wood, Mr. Buckner, thank you very much for that. I probably just jinxed the entire process, but we'll deal with that next Monday night. So why don't we just jump into the special, which will go off at, before I do that, I promised Chairman Alegi, the Finance Committee by bylaw is a seven-person committee made up of town residents, and we are down to four, I believe is the latest count, we were five before Ms. Roberts ascended to the Board of Selectmen.
Move sideways.
Made a lateral move to an equally as important office here in town.
Thank you.
Yes, no problem. So that leaves the town three short on Finance Committee members, so I promised the gentlemen that I would use the bully pulpit here and the microphone to encourage folks to come forward if you're interested in service to the town. You don't necessarily have to have a financial background, it helps, but certainly you don't need to have one, and I believe that the process is the Board of Selectmen, is that the point of contact? You can just write a letter to the Board of Selectmen via the Town Administrator, or maybe even an email, I believe his email is on the website, and we'd, you know, hopefully get a handful of people interested and we can get the board back up to full staff. That's really what we need, right? You're welcome. So, the special town meeting next Monday night at the Rainham Middle School will take place at 6:45, Randy? 6:45 is when we scheduled it. The special is, people will ask, why are we doing a special and an annual? The special is to take care of business that needs to be done in fiscal year 2015. Everything that we do on the warrant of the annual town meeting is for fiscal year 2016, which begins July 1st, 2016. So there's pressing business that needs to get done before the close of the fiscal year, and thus the reason for the special town meeting. I'm not going to read the articles verbatim here tonight, I will give a real high-level description, and if there are any questions in the audience, we certainly have the people here that are best equipped to answer these. So Articles 1, 2, and 3 on the special town meeting warrant are related to land-taking and layouts of Center Street, where it meets Route 138, Broadway, and this is to accomplish, I guess, the last piece of the Walmart puzzle, is that the best way to put it? This will allow for the previously-promised layout improvements to that intersection, including traffic lights. So questions on Articles 1, 2, and 3? Seeing none. Article 4, we're going to move some monies from overlay surplus over to the legal expenses Questions there? I would anticipate what is overlay surplus, and that is simply monies set aside, Mr. Luciano, put your former hat on here, but make sure I get this right, monies set aside for potential abatements? Would that be the best way to put that?
I prefer the new chair.
Mr. Lewis walked in! What are you hiding behind? Mr. Lewis, a brief explanation on what overlay surplus is.
The overlay surplus is money we put aside for potential abatements that we don't use, and we freed that up, we were very successful this year in deferring a number of abatements.
Excellent. So thus those funds are available prior to the closeout of the fiscal year. So in Articles 4, we'll remove 25 from that account and move it over to legal expenses, and Article 5 will be asking the town meeting to move 85,000 out of that account over to the fire department personnel expense account to pay for overtime due to two firefighters out on extended line-of-duty injuries, as well as, I'm assuming, overtime for the major snowstorms that we had over the winter time. Uh-oh. Article 6, again, we're gonna take money from overlay surplus for the maintenance and repair of town buildings, and then finally Article 7, we will take 38,000 from overlay surplus for the purpose of state mandated recertification, interim adjustments of all real and personal property valuations and maintenance services for the upcoming year, year two of a three-year contract. So, any questions on the special town meeting warrant? Seeing none. At the close of the special town meeting, which probably will be done before 7 o'clock if we start on time, we'll roll over into the annual town meeting, we'll go through the normal housekeeping items, rules of the road, is there a Resident of the Year this year? There is, you don't have to spill the beans, so we'll spend a little bit of time acknowledging a town resident for the annual award for Resident of the Year. And then we'll, quite honestly, we'll just dive right into the warrant. I will be using the consent agenda again for Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7. These are all articles, and you'll notice I skipped Article 3, that's the budget, but Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, and 7 are all articles that appear every year. History has proven that they are non-controversial, that they are, for lack of a better word, although I don't mean to minimize their importance, they are housekeeping articles. I will give a brief explanation of each, and then we will take them all as one vote, and there will be an opportunity for anybody in attendance to ask for a hold on any of the articles if they want further discussion on Articles 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, or 7, and I will set that aside, and then we'll vote consent agenda, and if there is questions on any of those articles, we'll come back to that article. Article 3 is the budget, and this will take some time, this is normally what takes the majority of the time at the annual town meeting, and I think now I'll break for a report from our Finance Committee with details and discussion on the budget.
First of all, the Finance Committee would like to thank all of the department heads, the Board of Selectmen, Town Administrator, Town Accountant, for complying with our request, again, this year, to keep expenses to less than 2.5 percent increase, and also including, in addition, the negotiated increases in salaries and wages. This year, for fiscal year 2016, we propose and recommend a general fund budget of 37.9 million, which is a 3.8 percent increase, or 1.4 million over last year, and we expect revenues to exceed expenditures. As usual, the two largest budgets are education, which is 51 percent of the total, and public safety, which is 21 percent of the total. Because of that, we're recommending that we add an additional 150K to the general stabilization account as another step towards our goal of hitting 5 percent of our total budget, which would be about 1.9 million. After this, the total in the stabilization will be 1.45 million. We also expect certified free cash in order to fund capital items at the special town meeting in the fall. Any questions, comments, Jim?
No.
Great, thank you.
So I noticed that, and if people at home are following along in their budget book here, they heard you say 37 million, yet when you look at the bottom line of the operational budget, you see just shy of 35 million, and the difference there is that many of your articles to fund departments, money, many of your line items to fund departments are actually articles.
Yes.
So that's how you get to 37 million.
Yep, the 37.9 is the total amount to be raised or transferred at the bottom of the second to the last page.
Excellent. And, you know, just a quick breezing through over the last couple days, it appears that everything that was requested was recommended, no variances between?
That's true.
Guys get along so well.
Isn't it? Oh, when they come in with their expenditures below 2.5 percent and negotiated salaries and wages, it's easy.
Yes.
But I think it's probably important to note, though, because I got asked this just this past weekend, this is after they've come in, department heads like ourselves have come in and many times have had to compromise on the requests that we've made. We don't wanna leave the impression, I think, with the town that the department heads get everything they ask for.
Right.
And even though it's, once this is printed, they both balance, but it's not because you didn't do your job in fine-tuning the requests of the department heads and lowering some of the requests that were made, because otherwise it would just look like a rubber stamp. And I think we can all attest that that's certainly not the case when we come before your board looking for some dollars.
Tastic balance between the requests and the other.
Right.
Not all the time.
So the process for the budget will be, as we've used in years past, I will read each individual line item, pause for a brief second, and if anybody at the meeting has a question or a concern, all they need to do is speak loudly and clearly, "Hold," and we'll circle it, and we will come back to it, and if we don't hear any "holds," we'll propose to approve the budget in total. Certainly not out of the question that there'll be a hold, we don't tend to get too many of them, and I think that, to your point, Mr. Luciano, that is due most in point to the hard work that's done to set this budget up by the Finance Committee and the department heads, where most of the negotiation, if not all the negotiation, has already taken place long before we go to print with the warrant. So certainly not out of the question that a department head could stand up at any point and say, you know what, my $116,500 isn't enough, and I would like to motion that that be 126,000, we've never had that, but, not in my tenure anyway, but not to say that it couldn't happen, but we certainly don't expect it, but the process allows for it. So that is the point of me pausing after each line item and asking if anybody would like a "hold," because we can't just kinda rubber stamp this budget and push it through with a voice vote, it needs to be, certainly the voters have been warned via the warrant in the mail, but more importantly, we need to give the voters the opportunity to ask questions and to express concerns about any individual line item. So that will take, depending upon how quickly I read, it can take anywhere from 10 to 15 minutes to get through the budget, and then we'll circle back around and we will vote on the entire budget, and then we'll move on, with the understanding that any subsequent action, subsequent action within the warrant that would affect the budget, so in other words, this is a very carefully crafted warrant, and the budget balances with some of the articles inside the warrant, if anything happens on the floor that would cause the budget to be out of balance, we would have to come back and revisit the budget, reopen it, reconsider it, and make the necessary adjustments. But again, that is rare, and I certainly don't expect that to happen either, but again, the process allows for it, so we have to be prepared. Questions on the budget? Very good. Back to the articles, Article 8 funds the before-and-after-school daycare, run-through park and rec, and I saw Liz walk in. This is offset by fees, I'm pretty sure, right, Liz? Yeah, there she is. So what town does is essentially funds this account to be offset by fees and charges received during fiscal year 16. So Article 8 essentially authorizes Park and Rec to operate the fund and to spend up to the amounts you see listed. So questions on Article 8? Article 9 authorizes, reauthorizes, actually Article 9, 10, 11, and 12, all reauthorize revolving funds. Article 9 reauthorizes to the amount not to exceed $100,000, the hazardous material revolving fund maintained by the fire department. Article 10, the fire alarm revolving fund. Article 11, that's not to exceed $60,000. Article 11 reauthorizes the Council on Aging Activities Fund, and Article 12 reauthorizes the South School Operation and Maintenance, I'm sorry, the Council on Aging maxes at 15, and South School maxes at 15 as well. Some time ago, the state authorized the municipalities to set up revolving funds and gave them the capability of, for lack of a better word, segregating revenues that were coming into town for the specific use of a particular department, and so fortunately, they have to be reauthorized every year, and these four articles reauthorize those for revolving funds. I get that right, Randy? That's correct? Good. Articles, questions on those four? Why we do it, what they're for, the powers that we're giving the department heads, no? Article 13 is the ambulance account, funds, transfers funds to fund the ambulance account for the operation of the ambulance account. We still doing two a year, Randy? Jimmy? So this is first half? Yep. So essentially, for those that aren't aware, the ambulance is run as a sort of standalone business within the fire department, it's self-funding, and the town has set up funds, and those incoming funds fully support, at least they used to, do they still, Jimmy? Chief, fully support the operation of the ambulance, as well as some other expenditures for the department as well. Continuing, some EMT stipends, I believe, that still work that way? Very good. Questions on Article 14, I'm sorry, 13? Seeing none. Article 14 funds the sewer enterprise account, appropriates just shy of 2.5 million, you can see what the authorized amounts are, totaling the 2.5, just shy of 2.5 million. Goes on to discuss sewer enterprise revenues of 1.7, sewer retained earnings of 163, and then it lays out, as recommended by the Finance Committee, the actual expenditures, the actual line items, that those monies are to be spent on, see, see salaries and wages, expenses, health insurance, and various expenses that run the sewer department. Questions or comments on that, or Mr. Luciano?
We'll have an amendment, town meeting floor Monday. I don't know exactly what the amount will be on the amendment, it's pertaining to a vote that we have to take prior to submitting the amendment, and we have a meeting Thursday night, and I will put it, if the vote succeeds, a majority vote on proposal, I will put it in writing to you, Town Council, Town Clerk, and anyone else.
So four, five copies? Generally, five copies in typed, so we don't struggle with the dependeeship, it's the Finance Committee, the Moderator, Town Council, Town Clerk, is she here? Town Clerk, and generally the Town Administrator as well. So five copies should get it done. That's a good time to pause here for all department heads, any proposed amendments that you know are coming, please, five copies in typed format, as you want the amendment to appear and be read. And that's for the minutes for our Town Clerk, we don't wanna be any, no guesswork, right, Marcia?
Yes.
You can walk them up to the front, Chris, at 6:40, absolutely, yeah, we just need to have them. Unless there's anything that changes the warrant in a material way, the Finance Committee's gonna wanna know that as soon as you know that, especially as it affects the town budget. If it doesn't...
All it will do is, it may change, if you notice the bottom part where percentage is raised from sewer enterprise revenues and a percentage of sewer retained earnings. Two-dollar amounts aren't gonna change, but what comes out of each account might be an adjustment.
And Randy, that sewer department is, it's not in the, so we don't have to worry about the bottom line of the budget, correct? Thank you, makes our job a lot easier. Further discussion on Article 14. Article 15, we're going to continue to pay off our debt obligations for the school system, for the buildings, 1.33 million, for Rainham Middle, renovation at La Liberty and Merrill, and the Rainham share of the regional high school. Questions on Article 15? Comments on Article 15? Article 16, we're gonna raise, we're gonna propose to raise and appropriate $60,000 for professional services for the highway department. This is the annual line item for maintenance, pretty much a budget item to be used as the highway superintendent sees fit for infrastructure obligations, improvements, things like that, Questions on Article 16? 17, we're going to propose to raise and appropriate $2,500 for the employee health insurance mitigation fund. I must profess, I don't know what that is, Randy, but I don't suspect for 2,500 you'll get too many questions, but in the event that you do, I'm sure one of our selectmen can comment on it. Questions on 17? 18, we're gonna propose to raise and appropriate $60,000 for the sewer stabilization fund. Questions or comments on that?
I believe that's the third year of town...
Three of 10? Sound right?
That's correct. Always defer to the Finance Committee.
Article 19, we're going to propose to raise and appropriate $30,000, combine that with approximately $80,000 from an old warrant from 2011 for renovation and repair of the North School, so roughly 110,000 will be available for renovations and repairs to the North School. Comments or questions on that? Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to have a better, a better understanding of the expenditures for the North School. We've talked about that over the years, and we have talked about doing everything from making a playground out of it to renovations, and I wonder how, how are the renovations being done here? I don't wanna be a skunk at the lawn party, but basically, I think that the major segment here, here is one that, while it's a town building that has historical significance, so that, but I'm wondering, not so much about the 110,000, but the cost of maintaining it in subsequent years for the purpose of storage, and to me, that sounds like a very expensive way of storing information, especially, I assume the building is gonna have to be secured, it's gonna have to be locked some way, and most of the records, I believe, have to be fireproofed, so basically, I'm just confused by it, I have to admit I don't have a great feeling for nostalgia, so that probably shows, nevertheless. If the committee could expand on that some as to what is going to be done, I've talked to people about it, and they told me, well, 80,000 of it were generated, but I personally don't care how funds are generated, I mean, 80,000 is 80,000, and if we weren't using it that way, we'd probably use it somewhere else, so I just...
Sure, no.
If we could expand on that, members of the committee, I should have volunteered for the committee, and I'm sorry, I didn't.
We would've welcomed, Jeff.
Well, there are committee members here, maybe one of them would approach the microphone and give us a...
I can do it from here, as long as everybody can hear me.
I'm just worried about folks at home, Jeff. Don't be shy, you've never been one known to be shy.
Been there before. Jeff Keller, I'll speak on behalf of who couldn't be here this evening, who couldn't be here the last time to get a presentation, Mr. Wheeler, I wish you could've seen that. Just a brief summary, unless you had a very specific question, I have some cost analysis or anything like that, are you just worried about moving forward?
I am mostly concerned about subsequent years, is it gonna run 30,000, 50,000 to maintain a building which is primarily for storage of material? And I personally think that it probably, the main reason is not the storing material, is I think we have the South School with some room in it, we have the Grange, I'm sure with room on it, so...
I couldn't speak on behalf of South School and/or Gilmore Hall, I know we have current tenants in Gilmore Hall, so I couldn't speak on any...
But the primary justification for the expenditure is the storing of records?
Correct.
Or is it just because it's a historical building, and in the town we've tried to maintain these historical buildings, we're sitting in one right now that was a great accomplishment, actually, for 3 million dollars.
And I agree, and I used that analogy in the initial presentation a couple of months ago. What we agreed was that we wanted to err on the side of preservation, if you look at Barbara Gallagher, Marcia Lonsbringer, myself, I lived in a 150-year-old home, we were gonna try and err on the side of preservation, but it wasn't gonna be at the expense of fiscal year responsibilities, so initially, we didn't have a knockout answer, we just didn't have it. John Chavino, Town Planner, came up with an interim survey for the use of space, secondary to the loss of planning and building departments at Gilmore Hall, they ended up here, so he had about a 1,400 or 1,500 dollars loss of space for this building, which created a need for storage, so we started to look at North School for the possible use of storage, at least on the interim, because it had basement access where handicap accessibility and American Disability Act and things like that wouldn't apply. So we started to look at what it would take to make that a viable building for storage, to get us to the next big thing, excuse me, and the analogy I used was similar to when former Chief Pacheco used this building under the...
RIAD.
RIAD and Homeland Security, he rented, I don't even know the agreement, but he rented or occupied the basement of this building after, and it kinda got us to where we are now. So we didn't necessarily have the knockout answer, but we knew what we didn't want was that building to roll away in a bunch of roll-off dumpsters, so we thought that this could get us to the next big thing. So that's where we tried to move towards, we thought with the economic development on Route 138, that eventually this could be something, or the town had the possibility to enter into another lease agreement because of the entrance on the ground floor. Not to mention, the building is perfectly financed, yes, I don't know the last time you were in the building, have you ever been in it?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Many times. When we were talking, the last time I was in it, we were talking about a major expenditure to remove the underground oil tanks. That has been done, I'm sure.
It has been done.
And the building was full of asbestos, so I think that has been done, but does the building have a heating system in it now, or is it new and gotta go?
The building does not have a heating system, we have proposals for heating systems. Again, that was all my original hour... And again, that was all my original, our original presentation, and no apologies.
Well, I apologize for not being at that presentation.
That's okay.
I'm just curious. I'm not just against it. Oh, not at all. I just don't understand. And before I voted on $110,000 and the major problem of assuming an obligation for subsequent years, and that's what I'm primarily worried about, is subsequent years, because I have been in this kind of environment in business, and when you're in the second year and the proposal is more, and people say, well, we've already spent this, so that therefore justifies this year's expenditure. That's the business trap I don't want the town to be in. And I just wondered, has this committee seriously studied subsequent years' maintenance costs? Or is it just that I went to school there and I'd love to keep the building? Unfortunately, I never did go to that school, but my children did, so.
Well, I went to school with your son. For starters, there's no reason to apologize for any employee. This is what this meeting is all about. And I respect your opinion, I've told you that in 21 years.
I don't intend to ask a question about this next Monday night. That's why I came to.
You're entitled to ask about it there as well.
Well, I'm not going to.
Like I said, we just didn't want a rash act at that school. We appreciate any input. We took input as a committee from people and friends all over town, and we would have loved to have you on the board, the panel, to begin with.
Well, I apologize. I would have been a skunk at the lawn party probably, so.
It's fine. That's fine. The more you talk about something, the more the clear-cut answer comes forward.
Well, I appreciate all of the work that the committee did, because I know it wasn't an easy task.
The analogy we used was walk before we run. We just didn't know if it wouldn't get us to the next big one. We're currently maintaining the property. Park Department, Highway Department maintaining the property.
Well, thank you for that.
I hope I answered your question. Any others? Thanks. All right.
Article 20, we'll be transferring some bond premiums for about $15,000. This is to do with sewer. Questions on Article 20? Comments on Article 20? No? Housekeeping?
That's the county department.
Gotcha.
Based on something to do with their return of the bond.
Okay. Article 21, we'll be proposing to transfer or raise and appropriate $150,000 in putting it in the general stabilization account. Would this be a good opportunity to talk about stabilization account, gentlemen? Current balance, or if you have it?
If this is approved, then the balance in the general stabilization account will be $1,450,000, which is about 5% of our operating budget, and the goal is roughly 5% to 7%.
Testament to the health of the town, I think. Very good. Questions on Article 21? Twenty-two, this is another article, it's a yearly occurrence, transferring from the cemetery sales of lots account, $16,500 for the purpose of funding road and infrastructure expansion at Pleasant Street Cemetery. Twenty-three, transferring $23,550 to the general fund to offset the board and colony expenditures of the general operating budget. Questions on that? Seeing none. Twenty-four, see if the town will raise and appropriate $60,000. $60,000 seems to be the number of the year towards this cost of establishing a central dispatch center, taking the action relative there, too. Questions, comments on that? Either of the chiefs want to comment on that, or are we going to stay away from it, or?
I like the proposal. You got to have the select.
We can comment, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like us to.
You can do it tonight, or you can do it next week. It's up to you.
We have preferences, sorry.
We'll save it. We'll have a little drama. We'll have a little drama next week. Mr. Wheeler.
A question on this. We've talked about this four or five years, and it was always my understanding that a centralized unit here would subsequently save us quite a lot of expenditures in town. Chiefs, I've heard everything from reducing the sum of the two departments up to two people, sometimes possibly three people or so. I think it's a great idea personally, but I've just not had any upkeep on it.
Did you say reducing our staff? Reducing our staff, is that what you said?
That's what has been talked about over the years, but I realize that you're short people in that. I'm not advocating.
Reducing. To save any money, I would need six more men in central dispatch.
But isn't a central, my question is, let me phrase the question. The reason for proposing the central unit is to curtail future expenditures. Is that correct, chief?
I don't want to say that.
I think Mr. Pacheco was raising his hand, and perhaps.
Well, I guess the question is, why do we want to do it?
Reason why, stop. I'm sorry. Stop. We will not have paramedics answering the telephone. We can put them on the road. That will give me four more people per shift that can go out on the road. I'm sorry, one more person per shift.
That's great, because that's what I was asking, was basically, I mean, you're really gaining manpower by centralizing this. And that's the primary reason. And a very good reason.
Well, you said reduce.
Well, I said it backwards. I'm sorry. Apologize, chief. I know you can't reduce me.
Mr. Pacheco, do you feel the urge to step on up and explain how we got to where we got to?
Now that Jim's had a heart attack.
Mr. Wheeler's very much enjoying his newfound prison. He's getting back from years of having to answer these questions.
Mr. Moderator, I'm trying to be positive.
All great questions, Wayne.
Thank you.
There's vacancies on the.
Yeah, we could find it, right?
Yeah, right. Mr. Pacheco.
I think I've been there. This board and our previous board with Mr. Shivo made moving forward with central dispatch a priority. This is, would be the second consecutive appropriation totaling $120,000. Our plan moving forward would be to appropriate the balance of the funds in October. We are working right now with a consultant to streamline the process, make sure that we're getting every efficiency out of this process that we can get, and figuring out ideally what we need in terms of staffing, both in the dispatch center and in police and fire on the road. One of the main things that I think compelled us to move forward with this is what Chief Janis talked about, and no, it's not a reduction in his department, but it's, we have professional, fully-trained, capable firefighters answering phones right now, and we don't believe that that's the best use of their time, talent, or resources. We'd rather have them on the street answering calls. There's been almost 1,000 calls since January 1 with the fire department alone, so we feel that this reorganization will be beneficial to the town, to the safety of the town, and long-term, we believe we will yield a savings per year by centralizing this. Our consultant also briefed us and let us know that we are one of only about 25 or 30 communities in the whole state that don't have central or regional dispatch. So we're really an anomaly here, and I think it's time, in this sense, that we get up to where a lot of the other communities are and realize some of those efficiencies. We recognize there's probably going to be some bumps along the road, and that's one of the reasons why we retain the services of a consultant who's done this in dozens of other communities in Massachusetts and is presently working with other communities right now, along with Rainham, to make sure that we do this in a way that doesn't adversely affect the response time or operations of either department.
Very good. Further questions on the central dispatch article? Seeing none. Article 25 is some minor rewording of the Rainham Conservation General bylaws and how they deal with deadlines. The bylaw used to explicitly give a time for the deadline for submission of applications, and now appears that they're just, want the applicant to refer to the regulations as opposed to the bylaw. Questions on Article 25? Article 26, as some may know, FEMA very recently redid the flood maps, and Rainham was, a number of different maps within Rainham were affected, and I believe this is, this is in an effort to have the correct flood maps on file here within the town. Do I have that right? That was the way I read it.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Please do. Bail me out.
This is, these maps are generated, analyzed, produced by FEMA. These are not the town maps. Basically, the responsibility the town has is simply verifying the geographic accuracy of the maps. The job of the town is not to look at individual properties and determine whether or not somebody's in a flood zone, not in a flood zone, properly, improperly. I want to make people aware, anyone in the audience, anyone who's watching on TV, about a month ago, I received an email from Colleen Bailey with the state with a list of links, information that people can access if they do have questions about the individual property. Again, these are not the town maps. These are FEMA's maps. Therefore, we, the town is not responsible for making that determination. I recently put the email from Colleen Bailey of the state on the Planning Department webpage, so anyone can go onto the town website under Additional Links on the Planning Department webpage. From what I understand, when I was in Wareham, a coastal community that was acutely affected by changes a few years ago, this may come as a surprise to some people, but they said that FEMA was very helpful, and they actually enjoyed dealing with FEMA, so that's good news. So people will see the date of July 16, 2015. I know this came up with the planning board. How can we approve something when the date hasn't come yet? That is simply the date by which these maps will become effective, and if the town has not adopted these changes at that point, then the town risks having any resident in the flood program excluded from the program, and it excludes anybody from who needs to become part of the program, they won't be able to. So the town really needs to adopt these changes in order to continue to be part of the flood insurance program for those residents who need it.
So where this would manifest itself for residents would be in their flood insurance for their primary residence.
Exactly. Usually, that's when it's, that's who picks it up. It's the mortgage companies and things.
Yep.
And I encourage anyone, if you have any questions, again, call the planning department. I can make copies of the email with the links and help put them in contact with somebody who can help them out. Unfortunately, if there is a discrepancy that a homeowner feels in their determination, the burden of proof is on the homeowner to show FEMA that they are not in a flood zone if it shows that they are.
Is there, for those people who may not be tuning in to this, you know, this exciting night of television and who aren't in this vast audience are out here right now.
Who would that be?
I'm not sure, but who might be in this new layout that's here. Is there any other way that the town is or the state is that can be proactive so that people that might really need to know this will know?
In preparation for the public hearing before the planning board, we did put an article in the newspaper letting people know in the Rainham Call and the Tongue Gazette that we were having a public hearing on this. So we've tried to do as much outreach as we can, and whenever I've had a chance at the public hearing or at a meeting like this, putting it on the website, I've tried to let anyone know that I can, you know, contact my office and get the word out as much as possible.
Thank you, sir. Article 27 will be amending the language in the zoning bylaws that deals with temporary signs, and I think we're going to get an explanation on the floor. So what's missing from this article, not a showstopper, but you know, obviously, we would prefer to have, whatever you change existing language, you'd like to refer to the existing language that you're changing, so that when you warn the inhabitants via the, that's why it's called a warrant, because we warn people. We like to generally have the old language referenced right next to the new language. So we'll go to great lengths next Monday night to explain the pertinent differences between the old language, which is not referenced in the article, and the new language on temporary signs. Questions on Article 27? Article 28, the article that just wouldn't go away, right, John? We're going to hopefully finally put an end to the saga that has been the registered marijuana dispensary article. So if people think back to last May at the annual, we established an overlay district that said, here's this district, and here's where we would like marijuana dispensaries to go. What it didn't say was, here's the only place that marijuana dispensaries can go, and that was the original intent of the planning board.
And the purpose, that, the additional language that you see came along, came during the process of putting forward this article. The original intent of the article was, once the planning department implemented the bylaw amendment into the bylaws, we noticed that the section where it was adopted really was not a fit for it. It gave the impression that was part of the adult use district, which is a special permit in the industrial zoning district, where a lot of people didn't want it when we started the process of establishing an overlay district. So this is, in essence, a housekeeping article to move it in the proper alphabetical order to be consistent with the formatting of Article 7, which is all the special permitted uses. So it's simply moving it from one, four pages, I think four pages further into Article 7. And then as the language of, as this article was developed, the town administrator, town moderator recommends some clarification language, including the bolded, underlined sentence you see, to emphasize that this is the only area where these facilities are allowed. And then, Mr. Moderator, you noticed during the process, you had the amendment that's going to be made on the floor to simply tweak the language in the introductory sentence to clarify this even further, to make sure that it reflects the amended language.
So the shortfall here, just for people that care, all four of you, I guess, is the, so, you know, when I read the article, that is essentially a motion, right? So I'm reading a motion which puts the article onto the floor. You'll hear somebody from the selectmen make the motion to approve. Now, we've got a motion read, we've got a motion that has been moved to approval, and we get a second. And generally, what we like is, within the body of that motion, everything that we're doing needs to kind of be outlined, right? Needs to, so to John's point, you know, yes, we're moving things around within the bylaw. That's clearly stipulated within the motion. But what the motion doesn't tell the voters that we're doing is we're adding that bolded language, right? So we'll take care of that on the floor via an amendment. I get comfortable, you know, I've gone back and forth on this, and Town Council and I have discussed this over the last couple of weeks. The fact that the article last year, I think any reasonable person could read that argument, not the argument, read that article and say, okay, I understand the intent, what the planning board was trying to do. They were trying to develop an overlay district specifically for marijuana dispensaries. The fact that we need to come back this year and clarify that, I think that there's enough warning via the old article as well as this new article that I think it would stand any type of challenge if a challenge were to happen. What they teach us at moderator school is if you can get comfortable with an article, you should do so and leave it up to the Attorney General should a challenge ever arise. Now, you know, 99.999% chance this, no one's going to challenge this, and I think even if they. you know, 99.999% chance this, no one's going to challenge this. And I think even if they did, I probably just jinxed this again, didn't I? Even if they did, I think it would withstand any challenge, because the process over the last 12 months has been pretty explicit about what the town is trying to accomplish. So, I feel good about the proposed amendment. Five copies written down, right? And I think we'll be okay on Article 28. Do you have a comment, or, no, you agree? Good.
And, Mr. Moderator, the fact that the legal advertisement that was posted in the paper for the public hearing before the planning board included the language that is going to be expressed in the amendment that's made on the floor.
Yeah. Good. So, hopefully, at this time, next Monday night, we will have seen the last of marijuana dispensaries on the town meeting floor.
Yes.
Wouldn't be surprised if somebody asked us if we were sampling the, Article 29, I'm sorry, any further questions on Article 28? Seeing none. Twenty-nine, see if the town will vote to accept a gift for an existing pump station building. This is the Walmart one, I believe. Yep.
Article 29 and Article 30 go together. One is to accept a pump station, one is to accept...
In Eastman, yeah.
...from Broadway next to Murray House to get to it. And what this will do is, we'll sue it about, and we'll take over the pump station. The town will take it over, as well as all the lines that connect it. So, from Leo Ock and Wall, the auto, Route 138, south of Walmart, all the way up to Main Hill Street, all those properties will now have sewer available. And it was all done by private funds, so they won't have to pay maintenance. They'll simply have to pay connection fees. A lot of commercial land, a lot of houses to sewer on someone else's dime.
Excellent. Questions on that? Seeing none. 6:45, special town meeting Monday night, Rainham Middle School, followed thereafter by the annual town meeting at 7:00 or thereabouts. And thank all of you for coming down and answering questions, and hopefully, we will see everybody at the Rainham Middle School next Monday night.
Can I ask a question?
Thanks, John. Thank you.